I'd like to welcome you to our May 5th. Public Works Authority and City Council meeting. I've got some preliminary remarks, kind of setting the stage if you will. Under the authorization provided by Senate Bill 661, this meeting on Tuesday, May 5th, the Guthrie Public Works Authority and the City Council meeting will be conducted by teleconference conferencing in lieu of our traditional in-person meeting format. We are utilizing the Zoom video conferencing platform. And for those of you that would like to watch these meetings, or this, this meeting, you can follow it on GT TV 20, Cox Channel 20, live streaming on the city's Facebook page. And the link there is www.facebook.com/cityofguthrie. Or live streaming on the Guthrie News page link, which is www.facebook.com/guthrie news page. Our, our protocol does provide for public comment. Public comment needed to be submitted by 2 o'clock to this morning, this afternoon, to Kim Biggs, our, our city clerk. And each person submitting a public comment needed to be either a citizen, an employee, or have a business in the city limits of Guthrie. And with that, we will start with how we always do on our city council with the pledge, and then with the prayer, and then I'll gavel in our, our first Public Works Authority meeting. But first, if you would please join me on the pledge to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for our prayer. Father God, during these challenging times in our country, our state, and our community, please guide us in our deliberations this evening. And Lord, grant us the ability to actively listen to the opinions and positions of others as we gather as much information as possible to make decisions that impact our entire community. And Lord God, guide us in a respectful exchange of ideas that we can provide a safe and productive environment for all the citizens of our community. That ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of Tuesday, May 5th. First, I'd like to go through a roll call to make sure that we have everybody on board and have a quorum. If you just identify yay or yes, if you're, if you're viewing this or listening to this, Councilman Case?
Yeah.
Councilman Long? Here. Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilman Bathroyd?
Here.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Yes.
And Mayor Steve Gettling, yes, we do have a quorum. Second item on the, our agenda is public comments. We have no public comments that were submitted to Kim. We do have however, a, a proclamation that I'd like to have the opportunity to read. This proclamation is for National Police Week and as well as National Peace Officer Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 13th, 15th as Police Officer Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas members of the Guthrie Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Guthrie. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property by protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Guthrie Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides vital public services. Now therefore, I, Mayor Stephen J. Gettling, call upon all citizens of Guthrie and upon all patriotic and civil and, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10th through May 16th, 2020 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our citizens may join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to the community and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Guthrie to observe May 13th, 2020 as, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of three Guthrie peace officers who through their courageous deeds were killed in the line of duty. And to recognize these police officers who through their valiant actions have become disabled in the performance of their duties. And I had the distinct honor and privilege of signing that. Chief, would you like to make some comments, additional comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I, I appreciate you and the council taking the time to acknowledge the work and the, of the men and women of the police department. It really means a lot to them. It means the world to us, but we, we take the 13th and honor the memories of the offers, officers that we've had killed in the line of duty. Luckily, we, we had Officer Webb Lester killed in 1894. And we had officers Isaac Caldwell and Lon Muxlow killed in 1913. It's been a long time since we've had a line, line of duty death. However, I would also like to mention the Logan County Sheriff's Office. They shared this week with every other peace officer and, and their memorial day. We always take time to remember Jason Wright, who died in the line of duty in 2016, and David Wade, who was cold bloodedly murdered in 2017. He rests pretty heavily on our hearts and minds. So with that said, we, we really appreciate each of you taking the time to recognize the work done during this week and then to honor the memory of those personnel who have given the ultimate sacrifice to serve the citizens of this community.
Well, thank you again, Chief. We certainly appreciate the excellence of you and all of your staff in, in keeping us, keeping us safe. Appreciate your, your protection. The third item on the agenda is our consent agenda. One item is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Authority meeting of April 21st.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Again, we'll go through a roll call on the vote. Councilman Case?
Yes.
Councilman Long?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilman Bathroyd?
Yes.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Yes.
And Mayor Gettling, yes, unanimous approval then of the consent agenda. Item number, oh, well, that's the end of our Public Works Authority meeting, so I adjourn that. And I call to order our City Council meeting of Tuesday, May 5th. We have a second item on the agenda is the consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of April 21st. And B is the minutes of the special City Council meeting of April 27th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, roll call vote. Councilman Case?
Yes.
Councilman Long?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilman Bathroyd?
Yes.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Yes.
Mayor Gettling, yes, unanimous approval of consent agenda items A and B. Item number three is discussion and possible action of Resolution 2020-5 relating to the retention of public records of the city and related entities. Kim, are you taking the lead on that?
I'll take the lead on that, Mayor.
Okay.
So this is a resolution that deals with retention of public records for the city and related entities. Certain records are required to be kept by Oklahoma statute, but that statute does not address some records that have become relevant in the world that we live in today, including social media, email and text messages, and voicemail. And therefore, this resolution sets a standard of how we collect and keep those. Actually, what it does is it allows the official who receives it, or the employee who receives it, to delete those posts in a timely fashion. Social media do not have to be retained more than five days. They can be removed, destroyed, and not retained after five days. Electronic mail, email, text messages. Maybe deleted upon receipt. The same about voicemail. They can be deleted, deleted upon receipt. So basically what we're doing is we're allowing those records not to be kept unless they're required to do so by law. One caveat I want to point out on that, especially for council members, if those are emails and discussions that involve a majority of the council, there can be open record issues. So we want to make sure as always, we watch that and don't have threads going around that address a quorum of the members. But other than that, this allows those records to be destroyed either within five days on social media or at the time that day for voicemail and email. That is the standard thing that's going around. Kim received this, I believe, from David Weatherford at a conference she was at. I looked at it today. Several cities have this. Oklahoma City has the same exact policy. Though as everything we have, it's much longer and more detailed than this. But this is a safeguard for the, for the city. Somebody can't say in, come in and say, hey, I want to see emails from three years ago, and we don't have a policy that addresses that. Now we will. So I think this is important that we pass.
Okay. Any questions of our city attorney, Billy? Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second? And a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Councilman Case?
Aye.
Councilman Long?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Bathroyd?
Aye.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Aye.
Mayor Gettling, yes, a unanimous approval then to approve Resolution 2020-5 on the retention of those public records. Thank you very much. Item number four, discussion and possible action in the city of Guthrie's official ballot voting for three trustees to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for three-year terms beginning July 1st of 2020. Kim, I guess you're taking the lead on this.
Yes. Each year we're asked to submit a ballot for the Board of Trustees of OMAC. This year, staff recommends Pam Polk from, she's the city manager in Collinsville. Russ Meacham, he's the CFO in Perry. Daniel Tarkington, he's the mayor of Shakota, and he's an incumbent, and he also sent, submitted a letter of interest. And then for Justin Battles, he's the assistant city manager of Mustang. That's who staff recommends.
Okay. Any, any questions of Kim? Okay, comments? I, I personally think that it would be good to have representation from, from the mayor, from Tarkington. So on, on the three ballots, we would have a city manager, a financial person, and a mayor. So I would recommend Tarkington as the, as the third choice there. Any other thoughts?
Just because he's mayor?
Well, and, and he's incumbent, and he's a very qualified individual.
There you go.
You're right.
Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion then that we, that we submit Polk, Meacham, and Tarkington as our, as our three votes.
Most moved.
Have a motion. Is I, was there a second? Have, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Councilman Case?
Aye.
Councilman Long?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilman Bathroyd?
Aye.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Aye.
Mayor Gettling, yes, unanimous approval then to submit Polk, Meacham, and Tarkington as the three votes for OMAC. Item number five, discussion and possible action to confirm the mayor's nomination to the Guthrie Library Board. We have three vacancies that are, are up. I'd like to reappoint Jamie Newton and who has served a partial term. She took over when there was a vacancy. And, and also Dr. Kemper, Kevin Kemper, and Wanda Black for three-year terms ending in May of 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any discussion? Is Su, is Su Set on the line? I didn't, I didn't think she was. These, uh, these were the only three applicants we had, but they're, they're very qualified applicants, I think, bring some, well, of course, Jamie has been on the, on the board, but the other two, Dr. Kemper and Wanda Black, I think bring some very good skills to our library board. Okay, then we'll go roll call vote again. Councilman Case?
Aye.
Councilman Long?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Bathroyd?
Aye.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Aye.
And Mayor Gettling, yes, unanimous approval then to confirm those three nominees to the Guthrie Library Board. Item number six, discussion and possible action on ordinance number 3331, amending our Code of Ordinance concerning health and safety and the various articles that are listed there. Leroy, do you want to take a, a lead on this?
Yes, I'll get it started. I thought it might be helpful if we just take the section 3331 one at a time in order to respect them in lieu of jumping back and forth from one section to another and getting everybody confused.
Okay, you're, you're breaking up a little bit from my end. I don't know if anybody else is experiencing that.
Yes, yes. Can hardly hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
That was better.
Justin's working on it, so I will go ahead and see if I can't push through it. We sent you a lot of, but I tried to put together some clip notes this afternoon. Sent those to you around 6 o'clock if you happen to check your email. But section 11-120 is the first one that deals with area covered. Of course, that would not change because it's our city limits. Section 11-121 is the effective date in term of the ordinance. We'll discuss that, but we'll come back to it again once we know if there's any provisions that we want to extend or not. Option one would be if there are any provisions within the ordinance that you wish to maintain, you could extend the effective date of ordinance through 11:59 PM, May 19th, which happens to be our next regular city council meeting. And if we do decide to adopt Resolution 3332 to extend the provisions of the ordinance that we adopted before, for it to go in effect immediately, you'll need to remember to adopt the emergency clause separately with the supermajority. Option two, if there's no provision within the ordinance that you wish to maintain, no action is required, and the provision stipulations of 3331 would expire at midnight tonight. The following would still be applicable within the city limits of Guthrie. One, Governor Stitt's open up and recover safely, or as the acronym R plan that was published on April 22nd, and the Governor's Executive Order 2020-07 is amended. Those would all apply in the city limits. The city of Guthrie would strongly recommend through public awareness campaign on social media that individuals and local business continue to follow the CDC Center for Disease Control recommendations on social distancing, wash hands with soap and water, avoid touching the face, disinfect frequently used items and surfaces as much as possible, stay home and contact their doctor if they're feeling sick. For any reason we experience a reboot or spike in COVID-19 cases going forward for our immediate area, the city council has the ability to call an emergency meeting to adopt new guidelines or directives appropriate to situation and if we let these expire tonight. In the meantime, we will be relying more and more on local residents and businesses commitment to continue to fight diligently by following the CDC regulations and the Governor's open up and recover safely plan as we strive to reopen autonomy in a safe manner. I think we'll see if there's any provisions that you want to retain before we come back and deal with the effective term of date. 1122 cloth face and cloth face cover or mask. Option one there, of course, is extend the mandatory mask provision for two additional weeks to May 19th, which is our next regular meeting. Option two, remove the mandatory mask provisions from the ordinance and make it a highly recommended practice being by community awareness campaign on social media explaining the benefits of the you protect me, I protect you concept. Some background on masks for both the audience and the city council. Many people are confused about whether people should wear masks and why and what cost. There are two very different functions of masks. Mask can be worn to protect the wearer from getting infected, or mask can be worn to protect others from being infected by the person wearing the mask. Protecting a wearer is difficult. It requires medical-grade respiratory mask, a proper fit, and careful putting off, taking off, referred to as personal protective equipment or PTE. But mask can also be worn to prevent transmission to others, and this is their most important use for society. If we lower the likelihood of one person infecting another, the impact is exponential. So even a small step, those odds results in a huge decrease in deaths. Luckily, blocking transmission outward at the source is much easier. It can be accomplished with something as simple as a cloth mask. A key transmission route of COVID-19 is via droplets that fly out of our mouths. That includes when we speak, not just when we cough or sneeze. Of course, these droplets quickly evaporate, becoming tiny particles whose inhalation by those nearby is hard to prevent. Research shows that even a cotton mask dramatically reduces the number of particles emitted from our mouths by as much as 99%. By those, if 80% of the people wear masks that are 60% effective, easily achievable with cloth, we can get to an effective infection disease reproduction rate of less than one. That's enough to halt the spread of COVID-19. Many countries already have more than 80% of their population wearing masks in public, including Hong Kong, where most stores deny entry to unmasked customers. In Hong Kong, over four confirmed deaths due to COVID-19 have been recorded since the beginning of the pandemic. Despite high-density mass transportation and their proximity to Wuhan, Hong Kong's health authorities credit their citizens' near-universal mask-wearing as a key factor. Surveys show almost 100% voluntary compliance. The community use of masks for source control is a public good, something we all contribute to that eventually benefits everyone, but only if almost everyone contributes, which can be a challenge for swayed people to do. It's like emission filters in our car and chimneys. They need to be installed in all cars, factories, and houses to secure the air for everyone. Usually laws, regulations, mandates, or strong cultural norms ensure maximum participation. And once it happens, the results can be amazing. To date, city staff has implemented and enforced the mandatory mask requirements in our ordinance and an effective common sense approach. Our police department is showing great restraint and good leadership. There have been no heavy-handed tactics. Majority of local residents and businesses applied with the provisions of the ordinance, and I believe the mask had made a substantial difference in our community COVID experience. With that, I would stop and let you all discuss. Do we extend the mandatory mask provision, this in our current ordinance? Or do we want to let it expire effective midnight tonight and make it a, something that's recommended, and we would use social media awareness and education to continue to promote the benefits of wearing a mask?
I'd like to put out a little clarification on our current ordinance that we have. I saw some people making the statement here this evening and other times. There's a lot of them say, well, they are requiring us to do this. They, meaning the council. We're not requiring you to wear a mask. If you go out on your porch and want to get your mail and there's no mask, that's fine with us. What the current thing we have in place says, if you get into a situation where you can't maintain social distancing, then you need to wear a mask. That's it. And, and to me, it's kind of shocking. If, if I walk into a room with Case and Bathroyd and Taylor and Leroy, and we know the thing is there, are you not going to put that on anyway? But people have it stuck in their head that we're requiring them to sleep in them, or, you know, it's silly, the stuff that you guys are implying that we're doing, and we're really not. The whole thing is just there to try to protect everybody. And I got a deal here that I, I want to read. Got two or three deals that I want to read. So if Leroy gets to read, I get to read. This is from the CDC, and it says, "We now know from recent studies that a significant portion of individuals with coronavirus lacks symptoms, and even those who eventually develop symptoms can transmit the virus to others before showing symptoms." This means that the virus spread, or the virus can spread between people interacting in close proximity, for example, speaking, coughing, or sneezing, even if those people are not exhibiting symptoms. In light of this new evidence, the CDC recommends wearing cloth coverings in public settings where other social distance measures are difficult to maintain. Example, grocery stores, pharmacies, that type of thing. That's, that's exactly what our ordinance is doing. That's what we have in place. We're not requiring anything. And I know before all the Facebook lawyers get started on this, that says they recommend them. I hope you guys realize the I hope you guys realize the CDC, all they can do is make recommendations. They don't have. A legislative arm where they can make laws. They make recommendations. We took their recommendations and we made a ordinance to try to protect everybody in the city. We were doing the best that we knew to do with the information that they gave us. And by doing that, some of you have thanked us by suing the city. Some of you have thanked us by saying they hope the whole council get the flu and die. Is that the kind of people that we're serving out there that, you know, I'm kind of going off on a rant here, but. Everybody that I see on this screen, I've got two screens full, have done their best to serve the, the people and protect them. I could give a rip about the power or the power trip that all the Facebook lawyers think that I'm on. And I, you know, I really couldn't care. And they'll sit back and say, well, they don't have a stake in it. Well, let me tell you my stake. I have a business here in town. That's affected by this, whether it's my customers are are on lockdown or for whatever reason, it affects my business. I have a one year old grandbaby. I have an eighty three year old mother. And I have a lot of other families living around here. I've probably got just as much at stake in this as all you Facebook lawyers. And for you guys to sit back and say that you hope we catch it and die because we're trying to protect you because we have no stake in it. You need to give your head a shake. And I better just shut up at that point, um.
Okay.
I'm getting up on my pedestal.
Okay, uh.
Thanks, Don.
That was good.
Well, you know, none of us here are sitting here going, oh, I want to sit in my gold castle. And drop things on the head of the peasants. All we're trying to do is make our way through this and so that we all get to the other side so that we're all here next summer. And for these people to say how we're trampling their rights and doing all this silly stuff, you've got the right to die too. I mean, it's silly if it's some of this stuff and it, you know, I don't mean to seem dramatic, but. It's downright silly for you people to talk where we're trying to protect yourselves and all you want to do is wrap yourselves in the constitution. But I promise if it was your mama or your grandbaby or somebody else that was sick. You'd be mad at everybody waving that constitution around.
Don, you point out a good, you point out something that I want to hit on real quick. Because I keep hearing it time and time again, and that is that the CDC only makes a recommendation. And I'm glad you point that out, that the CDC does not have the authority to make a law. The council does.
Right.
And I think that's really important. And I just want to say thank you for pointing that out because I've heard that time and time again. Well, the CDC is just a recommendation. Why is the city taking it beyond that? And you explain that well. So thank you.
I would like to make a statement. I, just before this, I was watching the news. And, um, it very clearly stated that whether it is, um, part of this COVID nineteen or something separate, there, they have found a new strain. That is more deadly than COVID nineteen. And, um, they're expecting that to. Become more viable in the very near future. I'm not stating one way or the other, but I think we should consider. The fact that this is, uh, has been stated on, uh, national TV. And that if that is the case, and it's going to be worse than the COVID nineteen. We have not been, um, out of line to recommend or make the ordinance that there be a mask worn. In public places. That being said, I welcome more discussion, but I wanted. To let you all know that that was on the national news this evening.
Yeah, I, I think, um, in my, in my mind, uh, the first three levels of, um, uh, protection or reducing the, the, uh, contagiousness of the virus. Uh, first one, of course, is to stay at home. Um, and the second one is, uh, is social distancing. But the third one is the mask. I, I, I think that, I think that is really an important, uh, element. Uh, in reducing the transmission of, of the disease. Uh, and I think that we have set, uh, we have set a, um, a standard. Uh, a position, uh, that, uh, we, the council are, are concerned for the safety of our citizens. Uh, and that we, we unilaterally, not unilaterally unanimously. Um, uh, voted to, to make the mask a mandatory thing. I think it was, has been positive, uh, for our community. I'm not going to tell you that there's been a hundred percent compliance because we all know that there hasn't been. Uh, but I will say that I think, uh, I think that there are some people that were maybe on the fence. That when the city council took a stance of mandating the mask, they wear the mask. Some people aren't going to wear it regardless because they, they, for whatever reason, some have, some have some medical conditions that maybe can't. Uh, they're claustrophobic, that, that kind of thing. Uh, others are just saying, hey, um, I'm just, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm going to do what I want to do. Uh, and you're not going to change those people. But there are some people that are on the fence. I think that, I think our position that we took, uh, swayed a significant number. Uh, and I think it's, uh, it's helped, uh, uh, us in, uh, containing the virus. Uh, and, uh, if you look, uh, i- if you look worldwide, there are countries that were wearing the mask. Uh, have, uh, have less transmission of the disease. Uh, there are some hotspots in our country. New York City now, uh, has gone to mandating the mask. Now, after they, after they were a hotspot, uh, I bet they wish they had done it. I bet, bet they wish they had done it three weeks ago, four weeks ago. Um, just my personal opinion. I think, I think us taking that position sends a message to the citizens. That we are number one concerned for their health, uh, and, and feel that this is a significant barrier to the transmission of disease.
Mayor, I've got.
And, oh, go ahead.
I've got my other thing to read here. It's, it's, was sent to me, but it applies to all of the council. Uh, it says, for what it's worth, I'm strongly in favor of wearing the masks in Guthrie. I was recently diagnosed with rheumatoid arthritis, an autoimmune disease. I was picking up takeout yesterday here in Guthrie and no one, not even the workers in the establishment were wearing masks. I was the only one. That said, I will continue wearing mine when out and about and I will limit my timeout as well. Thank you for your time and may God help you and the council on your decision night at the meeting. So, you know, everybody is not ugly. I, I, I threw the question out on Facebook and in a couple of places and. It's a, in my, you know, looking at what I had, it was about a sixty forty, sixty percent. Think that we need to continue it, forty percent, uh, didn't. And, and that's their right. I don't have a problem if they don't want to. What gets me on my soapbox is all the personal trash and when it, you know, we're doing it for their own good, but. I'm over it now. I said my piece, but.
The one, the one thing I would, go ahead, Don.
There are, there are people that support what we're doing and they understand it and they do appreciate it.
Well, they do. And you, you know, we can, you've said a couple of key things, Steve, actions we took. Uh, by taking the stance of mask and enforcing the mask, we did that. And I think, and just like when we were, uh, closing down around us supposedly, you know, I never wanted to shut business down. Uh, any of that, but we took a reprieve for a thirty, forty day timeframe and I think it helped. I think the masks helped as well. But let me just throw this at you. I wear the mask when I go out and about. Uh, it, hopefully you'll continue to wear the mask when you're out and about. But for us to, to mandate the wearing of the mask going out and about. I don't know that I agree with that at this point because I think that we need to, yes, we need to wear the masks. We need to take responsibility, but we can't play mom and dad on this thing either. Uh, they are, if you don't know what to do now. Wash your hands, social distance, wear the mask, then you got a big problem. And that goes for everybody watching. A big, big problem. And, you know, you have to protect your family, your friends, your neighbors. If it comes to infecting your kids. To where your children die or your mom or your grandma dies, you're going to wear the mask, right? That doesn't mean that I have to mandate that you wear the mask. You ought to know that.
It comes down to personal responsibility.
And by, by the enforcement that we took, and I say heavily took, because we did take enforcement. Okay, uh, I think it's time to lighten it up now. Not lighten up wearing the mask. I'm talking about the enforcement of it or the mandate of it. Okay, because people. Uh, I, I'll be shocked if they don't continue to wear the mask. The ones that aren't going to wear the mask, they're never going to wear it anyway and they didn't wear it. Period. Here's another thing. CDC recommends, and I, I read everything you read, Don. CDC recommends wearing the mask when you go into, uh, places where you're not able to social distance, like grocery stores and pharmacies. Well, guess what? They're all mandating wearing the mask. Costco just came out, I believe it was this morning or yesterday morning and mandated all their stores across the country. You will wear a mask. You won't be allowed in, period. So that's happening by the industry and the businesses out there now. Tyson Foods, all them, they're, they're social distancing. They're mandating their employees have to wear the masks. Okay, they have to continue doing all those things. I don't think that it's up to us any longer as a council. To, to impose that hard mandate. I think it's up as, to, up to us as a council to, to, to show responsibility by A, wearing the mask wherever we go. Okay, when we're outside and, and we can't social distance. I'm not saying in your car. I'm saying when you go to Walmart or if you go, you know, to the get gas or whatever. Uh, and, but I think that we need to greatly encourage, uh, if we, I, I don't know. We can't educate anybody any longer. If they don't have the education on this deal, then that's on them. I'm sorry. That's my opinion.
Jim?
I agree with Brian. I really do. I, I, I think this does boil down to personal responsibility. And I think the people in Guthrie are well aware now of what they can do to help keep themselves safe. And those that want to keep themselves safe will do it. They're going to wear masks. They're going to stay home. They're going to have their ki- grandkids go get their groceries. They're going to do what they need to do to stay safe because this ain't over.
No, nowhere near over.
Not by a long shot.
This is not over.
I agree.
My advice to the public is to continue to do exactly what we've asked you to do through this ordinance. There's nothing to change. I'm just not going to be a damn anymore. I'm not going to tell you to do it. You can do it. You're a big man.
And wash your hands. Wash your hands while you're at it.
All right, James?
Well, I, I was just going to say, in all phases, the, the president states strongly consider using face coverings while in public. And particularly when using mass transit. I think that all across the nation, that's what people are encouraging you to do. I don't think us saying an ordinance, requiring it. Is going to make a hill of beans difference. I, I mean, we're already not, uh, enforcing it with, with ticket writing or, you know, we've taken a soft approach there. But what's the point? I, I just don't get why we should have to mandate it any longer. We, we weren't. Strictly enforcing it before, and I think the private enterprise has taken on the social responsibility they probably should have taken on in the beginning. By requiring people when they come in their stores to wear them. And I, I strongly say that we, we would encourage everyone to wear them as well, but to actually have it as an ordinance, I don't think we need.
And I think, I, I. People that pay attention to the ordinance are the same people that are going to pay attention when the ordinance is gone.
Yeah, and I think the, the, the ordinance that we did put in place worked. Okay, and there was a bunch of people, wherever you went, everybody was wearing the mask. And I think that they realize now that that's just the new norm for right now. But I think we have to give people the responsibility that they need to take it on themselves at this point.
Uh, I, I, I think, I think the city council mandating the mask said, sent a message. Uh, and I, and I think, I think when you, I think when you relax that, even relaxing it a little bit for the mask. Uh, I think you send another message. Uh, and it's similar to the, similar to the opening of the beaches in wherever it was, California, Florida, uh, this weekend. And people went out there and they just, they didn't do social distancing. Uh, and so what, what, what did they, what did they have to do? They shut down those beaches. And I am concerned that if we, if we give the message that it isn't as important because it's no longer mandated. Uh, that we're going to see a significant, uh, release of people wearing the mask. I understand what you're saying. It's a personal responsibility. I think we set the tone. We set the tone in what, in our deliberations.
Look, the people that, some of the people that you're talking about though, Steve, I mean, come on, we're all big people here. Okay, and we've all raised families, I would think. We have children that we raised successfully, most of us. Okay, grandchildren that we're raising that we don't want to get sick. Okay, I'm not running down seeing my grandchildren because I don't want it, the, the, the position, I don't want to take a position to get them sick if I do have something I don't know I'm carrying. But at the end of the day, you have to, um, mandate at this point, we made a mandate. Okay, and it worked and it was successful and that's all it was ever supposed to be. We can't shut down for the year, Steve. I've got people that are saying, I ask them, how long do you want things shut down? Because they're mad because rest of.
We're not, we're not, wearing the mask is not, Brian.
Finish.
Wearing the mask is not shutting down anything.
Steve, let me finish, okay? I know, I understand, but when I do ask certain people, when do you, would you like the things, Steve, someone shut down all year? Someone, you know, end of August, September type timeframe. So when's the mask go away? When's this mandate go away?
Well, I, I don't know. I don't.
Why can't you, why can't you show responsible, why can't you give a sense of, a, a feel of responsibility to the citizens of the town at this point? That you need to wear a mask. That doesn't mean we're going to mandate you do. You need to wear the mask. Okay, are we kids? Are they kids? Are they not going to do it? Because oh my God, there's no mandate now. So let's all go jump up and down and not wear a mask. I don't think so. I take.
I, I, I don't know what, I don't know what will happen.
I take a lot more stock in our community than, than I do. I think people are responsible and they're going to be big enough to do it.
Okay, but Brian, your comment was we, we mandated the mask and the mask worked. I'm saying, hell yeah, it worked. So why, why take it away? Let's continue to make it work.
It, it, the mandate worked to get people to use the mask. If the mandate wasn't there, people wouldn't have put that mask on. But they did. Now they know it's not a big deal. Okay, and they should and, and I think are will wear the mask when they go out. That's what I hope. I believe in the community enough that they'll do that.
Uh, and, and, and I, and I think that, and I think that governor in California or whoever it was believed that the people wouldn't swap the beach.
Well, then if it doesn't happen, Steve, we can revisit on an emergency meeting with a forty eight hour notice and we can reimplement a mask.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know how you're going to measure that.
But Steve, I think also you're going back to the beaches. That's not apples and apples. We're not going to open up our parks yet, I'm assuming. So our parks would be comparable to their beaches. We're not talking, you can't compare opening beaches to wearing masks.
No, I, I, uh, James, they, they didn't even practice, uh, social distancing. When they went to the beach, everything, everything just went out the window.
But you can't even get into Wal- you can't even get into Walmart right now without a mask. You can't get into to Walgreens without a mask. Okay, these are the places that you get your food and you get your, and you get your prescriptions. You have to wear a mask to go in there. Now, some people take the mask off and they're still going to do that.
So my next question is, I'm seeing, I'm personally seeing people wearing their mask, going into Rick's or eating establishment. And wanting to know how they're supposed to wear their mask and eat. I think common sense tells you if you're going to eat, you take your mask off. But I'm, people literally put slits and holes in their mask so they can drink their coffee or whatever, things of that nature. And that, that, that just baffles me.
Yeah, you can't educate. James, if we're going to sit here and try to play mom and dad and educate people how to wear a mask. When they already know how to wear a mask is ridiculous. Okay, we can't do that any longer. And that's just my opinion.
Okay, uh, Leroy, I think you've been trying to jump in there.
Well, I think that's something that we could, uh, debate, uh, for the rest of the evening. Uh, we've kind of got the gist of where everybody stands and, and the reason. And I was wondering, as we tried to look at this ordinance and what parts of it, if any, do we extend? Could we have a straw vote to see where, uh, the majority of the council sets on their option one. Extend the mandatory mask provision or option two, and make it a. and make it a recommended practice reinforced by a community awareness campaign on social media.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind it.
Well, wait a minute, hold on, you don't need to make a motion to rescind anything, it expires at midnight. That's correct.
There we go.
Okay, I wanna make the motion to do option two and re-, and remove the mandatory provision, but highly recommend it, City Hall, do everything they can do to educate people. Uh, if we have to even help make masks for people, then that, that's what has to happen. Okay, if that's part of the education process. But that's why I'm leaning towards is option number two.
I agree.
So, uh, Leroy, what you're proposing is that we're gonna take a vote on, on that paragraph? On eleven dash one twenty-two?
Yes, so, and there was.
Okay, what, what I understand is that Brian, uh, has made a motion for option number two, which was to, um.
I protect you, you protect me option.
Ha- highly, highly, highly recommend the wearing of the mask, uh, but not mandate, not mandating it. And I understand that Jim has seconded that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So let's clarify what, let's, Mayor, let's clarify what that means though. So actually that's to take no action, correct? You wanna, you're gonna let it expire at midnight.
But, but, but Bill, we're trying to do it one piece at a time. So, as, as we find out this one, we'll go to the next section. When we get done, it may be no action at all, there may be pieces we wanna retain.
Yeah, we're not voting, we're not, we're not voting on the whole ordinance, we are only voting on paragraph eleven dash one twenty-two.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on that, thank you.
Okay, so, so Brian, uh, made that motion, and Jim seconded it, and, and it is to, uh, basically remove the mandatory aspect of the mask, but make it highly recommended, um, in, in the rest of the language.
And remember, the key important, you protect me, I protect you. That's what this community needs to gather around, because this is gonna go on for a long, long time. This isn't gonna end anytime soon, I don't think.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, and a second, and we'll go through the roll call, uh, vote on it. Okay, is there, is there any, wait a minute, is there any other discussion? Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? Just voting on that one element, uh, of the ordinance? Okay, Councilman Case?
Aye.
Councilman Long?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Bothroyd?
Aye.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Aye.
Mayor Getling votes no. So by a vote of six to one, the ayes have it. So that is, uh, changing that language for that paragraph eleven dash one twenty-two. Leroy, continue on.
So when we get done, we'll come back and, and summarize what we're doing. And we may need no action, or if there's some we want to extend, we may restore the ordinance, those elements in. So eleven dash one twenty-three, suspension of gathering and/or public events. Uh, I would like to remind everybody, this provision only applies to city, right, city-owned, uh, operated, and city-owned subcontractor property facilities. So it doesn't apply to property, school property, county property, just city-owned property. Uh, whatever provisions that, uh, you adopt should probably be tied to either date of the next regular council meeting, May nineteenth, or go beyond that date, since it doesn't require a special meeting if you leave this provision in. CDC, uh, mask gathering guidelines, uh, that they issued on March fifteenth, at a minimum, uh, at a minimal to moderate level of new transmission, it's recommended to, one, cancel community-wide mask gatherings, for example, two hundred and fifty or greater people. The cutoff showed is at the expression of the community leadership based on the current circumstances, uh, the community spacing, and the nature of the event, or move, uh, to smaller groupings. Cancel gatherings of more than ten people for organizations that serve higher-risk populations. Governor Stitt's opened up and recup-, safely planned, published on April twenty-second. No set number given, uh, for gathering limitations. Uh, it was based on, uh, events are to operate using CDC-recommended social distancing and sanitation protocols. You have to do some calculations with numbers. Six-foot distancing, uh, is six by six is thirty-six square feet. If you have a eight-hundred-square-foot area divided by thirty-six, that would mean you could have twenty-two people. So that's how you would come up with the number, uh, following the governor's guidelines. I, I sent you all, start from, uh, Kansas, uh, in their phase one, running through May eighteenth was ten, and then from between May nineteenth to June first, the thirty, on phase three, uh, from June second to June fifteenth, ninety. And then their phase four was to be determined. Uh, I would like to point out, when the city staff receives application for exclusive use of streets and/or public property, future, parades, other things, uh, gatherings, uh, in addition to normal applications, applicants will be required to submit a social distancing, hygiene, disinfection plan for application. Uh, diagrams to show how social distance and spacing will be maintained, uh, signage that will be put up at the, uh, interest events encouraging social distancing, uh, that individuals that are sick or exhibiting signs of illness do not attend, uh, how they will increase their sanitation, including hand washing stations, and eliminating high-touch areas, bounce houses, face painting. So I guess now at this point, we need to talk, do we want to extend that piece of the ordinance on, uh, limiting the number of participants for gatherings on city property? Right now it's ten. Uh, do we want to just follow the governor's plan, uh, and calculate for each event what would be allowed? Or do we wanna set a new number, and I would throw it out for those discussions?
Discussion, questions, comments?
What's the city have right now, Leroy?
Ten.
Okay.
Leroy, I see that you gave us the governor, uh, Kansas reopening phase and our current limitation. Um, if we were to look at our phase one, phase two, phase three, as far as I understand, Stitt's planning on going to phase two somewhere around May fifteenth, is that correct?
Fifteenth, correct.
On the, on the chart I give you for the city of Guthrie, phase one, two, three, and four, I tried to follow the dates that the governor did for his plan.
Are you talking about underneath, okay, I see.
What, what's the date of our first meeting in June?
Nineteenth. I think, oh, not in June.
No.
June second, right?
I believe so.
I don't know how everyone else feels, but I would be in favor of keeping it limited till first of June on city property.
Yeah, I think we have to at least limit that till the first of June. We can't. Nobody, Steve, is saying go out there and just, you know, and, and everybody, let's have parades and carnivals. That's not what this is about. Uh, so I think the only way to do that is to limit it, at this point.
So, what you're saying is that if there's more than ten participants, whether they're practicing social distancing or not, uh, you cannot have it on a city property?
Well, what kind of, I mean, I'm sitting here thinking, uh, I mean, you couldn't have any festivals or events, because they're, they're gonna attract even more than ninety people, which is governor of Kansas, phase three. Uh, you're gonna have, if you were to lease out the city park for an event, I don't know how many people typically come, but you're gonna, I'm sure most people are expecting more than ten, um, uh, participants or guests. If they rent out the gazebo, you're definitely gonna have more than probably ten kids on any playground equipment. You're probably gonna, gonna have more than ten participants in any event. If you had a car show, or, or whatever the case may be, you're gonna have more than ten people.
And if, I wanted to, if you go to the lake, like I went by, uh, Guthrie Lake this weekend, and there were some people fishing, a couple people having a picnic, but they, nobody was anywhere near each other. The little, uh, the playground wasn't opened, obviously. There was one dad fishing with his little four-year-old daughter.
And I think that's okay, I just think we're talking about events, aren't we, like being able to rent out?
Yeah, but that's how Steve's saying in general, because that, again, that's city property.
Yeah, no, actu- actually I was thinking in terms of an event, James, let, let's just say, let's just say that there's, uh, an event at the, at the arena, at the rodeo arena, um, this, uh, this month. Uh, but, uh, but they, but they're all practicing social distancing. If we leave this the way it stands and go to June first, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to have it, as I understand it, because they're gonna have more than ten people.
Well, and I wanted to have a birthday party for James and invite twenty people to the park. So, sorry buddy, you're out.
A, a convenient excuse there. But, but no, uh, uh, just going back to the, going back to the arena. Uh, so, under, as I understand, under the governor's, uh, i- if they, if they practice social distancing, uh, they could have that event.
I guess like, talking about the arena, don't we have a lease on that? Isn't somebody else managing that? Are we managing?
It's still city property, James.
And it is, city property, but didn't we agree a few weeks ago to follow the governor's guidelines? Um, what's going on?
But, 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 Brian, but our, our ordinance takes precedence, Brian.
I, trust me, I get it, Steve, okay, but we sent mixed messages too. You know, uh, you know, we wanna follow CDC, obviously everybody wants to follow CDC. Then at one point, when I first was with you to start, you know, limiting things, restaurants and everything else, and we ended up tabling that, we tabled it till we got to a gov-, till we could follow the governor. Okay, and so then, you know, we, that, that was brought up, we're gonna follow the governor's stance. Okay, now all of a sudden, that's out the window, and we're gonna just now go with our own, our own program. How does that work?
Well, well, that's the question before us, if we want to continue.
I trust, I, trust me, I know that.
I guess, I have a feeling too, we, we are so much a commuter community. Being any more strict than our neighboring communities is a waste of time.
At this point is nuts. And people should already get it.
I agree. But Leroy, didn't you say just a minute ago that if they present to us a plan where they're gonna keep people spaced and keep all that, then we can, we can allow them to the rodeo deal, if they're keeping distancing and all that stuff, they could have that, even if.
What we had done is we've told them, of course, nothing's set in stone until after tonight's meeting, then we get guidance from the city. But subject to that, if the council opens that up, when they submit their application for their use of property, or then in addition to that, permit application, they will have to submit a safety hygiene, a social distancing plan, to show that they are following the CDC guidelines set out by the governor. So, if you got, if you have six square feet, you're gonna be able to have so many people on that facility.
You have twenty-two per deal. But here's the thing also, you know, I see the, the Kansas governor's opening. What about, and I haven't followed it, and my bad, I should have probably. What about Oklahoma City? What about Edmond? Uh, what about our, the surround, Moore? What about the surrounding areas? What about the Piedmonts, the Yukons, the Mustangs? What is going on in the local area within our state? Because our state is what I'm concerned about at this point. I was concerned with everything, obviously, but you have to look at our state.
Uh, I know, I know that, uh, the Oklahoma Municipal League, uh, surveyed, uh, communities, uh, Brian, and, um, it was last week, middle of the week. And I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, uh, it's in the computer. But, um, the vast majority just went totally with, uh, the governor's plan.
Well, and that's what we originally went with in, in putting these into play in the first place. That's my point.
What about, you're gonna have funerals coming up, you have some people that have passed away. How do we handle that? And does a school then not be able to have graduation? If, let's say they're wanting to do it at the end of this month, or the beginning of next month? Will that include down at the, uh, football field? Is that, I mean, is that, since that's in the city limits? Does that KO that as well?
City property.
Not city property, Jeff.
Okay, I didn't think it was.
Even under the governor's plan, that's gonna limit that, Jeff.
Okay, thought I'd ask.
And the school, in their plan, will follow the governor's guidelines on CDC requirements.
Okay.
But they won't follow ours, because our ordinance only covers the property. But it would affect funerals in our cemetery.
It would, okay.
So what are we looking at? Whether or not to leave that piece there, or get rid of it?
I think, I think there's really two. Is, uh, you all come up with a number that you can justify to limit it for the June first, or our next meeting on the May nineteenth? Or the second option is to do it administratively. People turn in an application with an action plan showing how they're gonna do social distancing, hygiene, uh, and those type of things. That will calculate it, if they follow, if it, if they can show us they're gonna follow the social distancing requirements of CDC, we will approve it. If they can't, then they would have to adjust their plan, and we would do that administratively.
Well, what about the govern-, let's go back and look at the governor's plan again, if we can. I'm trying to find, uh, the dates, and then, and how he's opening up in these, in the se-, in the first, the second phase here. I know he's opening some things in the second phase, bars, whatever, but, uh, what is he saying about gatherings? And I know he's opening state parks and everything already.
Right, the parks got opened in, uh, in phase, uh, phase one, Brian, but, uh, the, the, the language that I see, uh, for phase two, which would be, uh, the goal of, of May fifteenth, uh, under, uh, it says organized sports activity can reopen and operate under proper social distancing and sanitation protocols. That's in reference to the use of the arena that I was, the rodeo arena. But, but that's the only thing that I can see, um.
Justin and I went through the governor's plan, and we could not see, as he goes through each phase, he opens up different things, but he doesn't give a limitation number on the gathering. He ties each one of them to.
Core failure.
Yeah, to follow the CDC guidelines on social distancing, hygiene, those type of things.
Well, I thought we're always gonna be following that. I think, I thought we were pretty much in violent agreement, we were following CDC guidelines. I'm talking about, we're talking about reopening city grounds and stuff at this point. Okay, and so CDC's always gonna be part of it, or for however long this thing lasts. That's not going away. Uh, remember, we're gonna protect, I'm gonna protect you, you're gonna protect me, that's the philosophy. So, uh, CDC has to stay there. I'm looking at the guidelines, I don't see it either. Uh, so, there you go.
I, I, I think, I think we're talking about, uh, this section, eleven dash one twenty-three, talks about events. Uh, and I, I, I think that if. Uh, and I, I, I think that if an event can show that they are, uh, providing a safe environment with social distancing and all of the other things that CDC is recommending, um, that, um, I think that should, should carry through in their, in their application.
They have to wear masks, Steve.
Yes. Thanks, James.
The, the question is, do you want to have an ordinance that on Section eleven, one twenty-three, uh, that says, similar to the governor, uh, events must operate using CDC recommended social distancing and sanitation protocols? Or do you just wanna let staff and force? As we review.
I think we wanted, I think we wanna have it reference CDC mandates and protocols. I mean, uh, uh, as far as cleaning and, 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 uh, social distancing and the whole deal.
I mean, it really comes down to, as far as when you talk about how, what the gathering limitation is. Depends upon where they're having it. Are they renting out the pavilion at, um, uh, the Apothecary Gardens there to do something? Are they renting out a pavilion at Mineral Wells Park? Are they trying to rent out something at, at, um, uh, Highland Park? I mean, I, I think all of those numbers are gonna be different because all of those spaces will really cater to different size gatherings. So are we gonna allow them to do a rodeo at the, at the fairgrounds? Or are we gonna let them rent out Highland Hall? I mean, I don't.
But if they follow CDC guidelines, it's not really gonna matter, because you're gonna put twenty, you're gonna put twenty-two people in an eight-hundred-square-foot area. That's it.
I, I, I'm agree.
So, follow CDC, that's what this whole, that's what I've been hearing for the last three meetings, that's what we're doing.
So, so your, would be the men, uh, eleven dash one twenty-three, suspension of in public events, would say all of this on city right away, city operated and/or city-owned subcontractor property facilities shall operate using CDC recommended social distancing and sanitation protocols. The other option would be for us to do.
That's the option.
But doesn't, but doesn't that happen automatically under the governor's guidelines? I mean, the city staff's gonna have to follow those guidelines set by the governor anyway, correct? So changing, so changing the wording on that doesn't give any more strength to it.
And if it's done by city staff, we can tailor it for each different event, the location, and just document their meets the CDC guidelines in place at that time.
I kinda like the idea of us having a little bit more control over what happens in our city.
Yeah, I do too. Because what if staff doesn't wanna ever open up anything?
Yeah, and, and Leroy, I think I may like the other option better than I do the CDC guidelines thing. Yes, I do wanna do that, Brian, but at the same time, I like having our hands in the pot just a little bit when it comes to what's gonna happen in Guthrie. I don't want the CDC deciding that. I'd rather us decide.
No, but you have to go by certain CDC guidelines if you don't.
We can still follow those guidelines. We, we can still follow those guidelines, Brian. I just want us to make the decision instead of them.
Question I have to, to Mr. Case. If you put this in the ordinance that events have to follow the guidelines, are you, is the city council gonna review each individual application and make that decision, or is it gonna be done by staff? Then, as long as staff is following the governor's guidelines, which says they got to follow CDC, do we need an, an ordinance that says the same thing the governor already said?
No, and it gives us, still, it gives us the final say regardless. We can still tell them no, even if they do follow.
What, what you originally said, Leroy, is if you wanna just leave it up to staff if they can have that event or not. That's the way you worded it initially.
No, that's not correct. I said we would review it to make sure it's CDC guidelines.
I like that. I make a motion that we accept.
You're gonna have to, hold on, Jim. You're gonna have to review it anyway, Leroy. There's no question of that.
I second.
So, so I misunderstood that you wanted to have the authority to either let them have the event or not. That's exactly what I heard.
And that's.
I misunderstood it at first too, Brian. I misunderstood it at first also.
Well, but I, but that's, I'm pretty sure that's what I heard.
Okay, what, we, we, we actually have a motion, uh, by Councilman Case, uh, to, uh, for language that would reflect that for all events, uh, that, uh, participating or with more than ten participants in city, uh, owned or operated or city, uh, owned subcontractor-operated, uh, properties or facilities that, uh, they would submit their application, uh, and it would be reviewed by staff, uh, per CDC guidelines.
Steve, you said a whole lot of words that I've never heard Jim say.
Yeah, well, I, I know.
Make sure that we have, also have an understanding, Jim included, that Billy was, I think, trying to tell us that if we're just gonna go by the state, we don't need to say anything at all.
Exactly.
Well, I don't see language in the state that, that reflects it, James. I, I don't, I mean.
Billy, could you clarify for us?
Well, in the governor's plan, on each phase, as he opens up different, he repeatedly says, events operate using CDC recommended social distance and sanitation protocol. That's in each phase, that's for knowledge used.
And James, I agree with what Leroy just said, and with that, any application would have to be submitted to staff. And Leroy said that's gonna have to have a hygiene, a social distancing component to it. And staff didn't make that decision on a case-by-case basis.
Correct. So, we don't necessarily need to say anything, because we're already, we already have to follow that, and the city staff is already gonna have to follow that. So by us just saying they have to follow it, we're being redundant.
I agree.
But what we're being asked to do, and, and if it's the case, if this is the case, that's fine, I wanna be real clear. But what we're being asked to do is not only follow CDC guidelines, but, but allow staff, which again, I don't know that I have a problem once we discuss this a little further, to make a call whether that event goes on or not. And it's their call at that point.
I like that, though. It's all the city.
That's what I'm hearing.
Can I clarify something real quick? So, by statute, or by our ordinance, we're saying it just can't happen, period. Staff can't allow it. It can't happen. If it's more than ten people, it can't happen.
That's what it says at the present time.
Right. If we let that expire, then we can go to a case-by-case basis and let staff have that determination. And Brian, when you were talking about you want the city to be able to make that determination, that's how we get there.
I would point out, any decision made by staff can always be appealed to the city council. So if.
No, I get that. I get that. And I'm not saying you're gonna do anything wrong either.
I know, but if we turn down one, then we'll need justification for it. They want, they could either adjust their plan per our approval, or they could always make our decision.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, as long as we're following these CDC guidelines that got us to where we're at today by pretty much everybody on this panel, and the governor's plan, then I don't have a problem with it, personally. I mean, I think that we can follow those.
Okay, I just, I, I, I'd like to remind the council that at the present time, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, there has been discussion, there has been clarifying discussion. Uh, and unless that, somebody, unless, uh, Councilman Case wants to withdraw that motion, we need to proceed on with the vote.
Well, what, what, before we proceed on with the vote, Councilman Case, tell me what your motion is for again?
To take the option too, where we were going to have, and the only thing I really want out of this is for our city staff, our city to have control over where we finally end up with this. If CD says it, CDC says do it, and we don't feel like we're ready for that, then we've got the choice, we can make that decision.
Well, the city council can come back and re-put plans into place and do that, but I wanna know specifically what motion you're making here.
I already told you.
I don't.
Basically, what, what I want is for city, what, what I wanted was for city staff to have more control in this than the CDC.
Okay, but that's not a motion.
But, after having listened to what Billy just said, it seems to me like I shouldn't withdraw my motion and allow this to just go on.
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, I, I.
Draw my motion.
I, 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 and is that, uh, is that acceptable to, to, uh, Councilwoman Pageant? Didn't you second that motion? So, is that acceptable to you to withdraw the motion? Okay. Motion has been withdrawn.
Sorry about that, James. I was trying to make sure of where we were going here.
Okay. So, uh, so.
So for right now, I've marked down the eleven, one twenty-three limited events at ten, that will expire. We won't take any action to renew that. Going forward, we'll follow CDC guidelines. Everybody will submit an application documenting how they will follow those guidelines for us to review as part of their permit, permit application for their events.
And I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion to approve that. You don't need a motion.
It's just, that, that, that would expire at midnight tonight, Brian.
It expires at midnight, but don't you have to put a new ordinance in play?
No.
It just expires.
Not if we want it to just expire.
Because again, because the CDC is part of the governor's deal.
Correct.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. All right, the next one, Leroy.
On eleven dash one twenty-four on closures, it has to do with the library, uh, Highland Hall, our park, sports facilities, and then special exclusive use permits for special. The phased reopening of these city facilities can be handled administratively by city administration based on the circumstances of each facility utilizing one CDC recommendation. Governor, it's open up and recover safely plan, um, and our goal would be to significantly open up as much as we can sometime in June twenty twenty, subject to circumstances at the time, by reopening these same stages. Each facility or program will have a social distance, hygiene, disinfection, reopening plan put together by city staff. Uh, playgrounds, shelters, public restrooms, fitness courts, disc golf course where there is interaction and touching, um, maybe women on the date they read it, but based on city manpower, they'll do, uh, the, the hygiene and sanitation of the event. If we open up playground equipment, we've gotta be prepared to clean it ever, our, ever to. We don't have the manpower. Uh, and then we also have to look at the safety of our city employees. So we, following CDC guidelines, staff would open up facilities to the degree we could, following those guidelines and, uh, the social distancing and the hygiene. If we don't have the manpower to do the hygiene, then we wouldn't. And with that caveat, I'd still like to point out Highland Parks Pool, staff has discussed we're not planning on opening the twenty twenty season, uh, one, due to the uncertainty of when it would be appropriate to open the pool and how much of the swimming season might be remaining, and the cost to prep the pool spending those dollars and then end up not even getting the swim season, those dollars somewhere else in our budget.
So, by doing, taking no action on this, it'll go to, it'll expire and go to this new CDC guideline plan.
Correct.
Which is really nowhere in writing, other than in the governor's memorials here that I can't even really find.
But Leroy, there's nothing that stops us from going out there and closing off the playground equipment, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, yeah, cuz Teddy's not gonna be able to go out there and sanitize it.
If we can't clean it, I don't want kids on it.
No, and what we will, what we will reopen is that we can ensure ourselves we can maintain the, uh, social distancing, the hygiene and the cleaning of those facilities. Those that we don't feel comfortable with, we will keep closed till a later day.
I like that.
So if that's the case, we would need no action on that provision. On the eleven, one twenty-five, Guthrie Boards, Authorities and Commission, our book is, if you don't, uh, do something different with the ordinance, uh, we will, uh, plan to look at things. Uh, the restart of all our board meetings in June of this year. And we may start out with, uh, uh, meetings like this and then go to in-person meetings later, but they will be phased in where we can start having meetings of planning commission, Board of Adjustments, probably in June. And we have looked at, staff has looked about six reopen plans by other cities that had a lot of good ideas as far as, uh, how to conduct them. And we will be taking from the plans of other cities and adopting guidelines for those boards to follow.
Okay, any, any questions or discussion? Okay.
On eleven, one twenty-six, uh, the phased restart of municipal court could be handled administratively by city administration with input from municipal judge and city attorney utilizing the procedures I just talked about. Again, our goal is to try to ease it back in in June twenty twenty. Uh, we will work with the judge and, and city attorney. Either have, uh, in one court session, a particular week, we may have two or three, uh, where we could have, uh, fewer, uh, participants in the court so that we can maintain social distancing or set up a system where it only allows so many in the courtroom at a time. Uh, uh, but we will come up with a plan to follow the CDC guidelines.
Any discussion, questions, Leroy?
On city utility eleven, one twenty-seven, uh, we're gonna phase in the restart of cutting off water service for non-payment, charging disconnect or late penalties. Uh, again, administratively, our plan is to start that back in June.
Okay. Questions, discussion?
That one I got a little bit of an issue with, as far as, we're gonna go back to cutting people's water off, is that what you said?
Correct, in June.
In June? Are we, you think everybody's back to fully employed again? Are we getting close?
We have no problem. If you all want to extend that, you tell us.
I think I wanna extend that portion of it.
Okay. Rather than adopt a new ordinance, if you all would just make a motion on when you want us to start, uh, cutting water off for non-paid, charging disconnected late penalties, if you all would just make a motion on a, a month or a day to vote on it, you don't have to adopt an ordinance just for that one thing.
So, Kim, how many, is there a lot of non-payment going on out there right now?
Hard to say. There's probably, we've probably got about a hundred out of four thousand, which isn't very bad.
Get off playing at all?
Well, I mean, it, it's hard to say. Since we're not running those, those reports to know who to send disconnects to.
Okay, I get it. So. Okay, I get it, so maybe we need to run it out.
I can give you an example, we, we send out usually about eight hundred, um, second notices and we, we actually sent out nine hundred. And so only, only a one hundred additional second notices, which was a good sign to me that everyone's paying their bills.
Yeah, so I'm with Jim, I think we push it off.
Maybe it's not the issue I think it is.
Well, I think for, for agenda purposes, I think you may ask more questions, but I think if you want to add that as a item, we ought to put it on the next, next meeting agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, good, 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 good point, Billy.
So basically, what, okay, well, how does that happen with the whole of this entirety of this, the, the whole question here?
Well, Brian, as, as I'm, have been listening to the conversation, it appears to me, uh, that, uh, for, uh, for uh, the ordinance that we're, that we're talking about, uh, it's, uh, no action taken, uh, and it expires at, it expires at midnight tonight. Uh, the two issues, primarily issues that we had the discussion were the mask, uh, and, uh, the events. Uh, and in both cases, uh, we have basically decided to, to let things kind of ride with the, the governors and the administration making decisions on events.
But what, our water here is what, we're talking about, water is what we're talking about.
So, so let me, I can clarify that.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as it is right now, if that expires, staff's telling you that their position is that they're not gonna start collecting that or doing those turnoffs until June. So we have another meeting in May, if we bring that up in May, council can give staff direction on when they want to start that, but, but their own policy, what they're telling you is it's not gonna start until June, and Leroy, is that correct?
Correct.
And in that meantime, Kim, you would be able to get us, run a report and get us a realistic number of what's laying out there, right?
Yeah, probably the first meeting in June would be better, because we typically, we typically disconnect the last weekend in the month. And so that would be after our May meeting. So maybe the first, the first meeting in June.
With Kim's input, what we would do is staff on June second, city council agenda would put an action item for you all to state when we start turning people off for non-payment, uh, penalties and reconnect fees. We won't restart it until after the June second meeting so that you all have a chance to look at it and extend the deadline if that's what you would like to do.
All right, fair enough.
If you're all in agreement, then we don't need any action on this. And all of this ordinance will, uh, expire at midnight tonight.
There you go.
That's how I'm hearing the discussion. Item number seven. Discussion, possible action to approve an option on the labor and materials, uh, to form and install gazebo footing slab perimeter sidewalks and so forth. Staff, Kenny, Leroy, who's taking the lead?
Kenny, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I don't. On my end, my, my audio's been cut and off and on quite a bit, but I'll try to get through this. Um, so at our last meeting, uh, council's requested us to go back to the contractor and, and check on a change order. We've done that, uh, change order number three, uh, came back at forty-two thousand eight six four. With that being said, uh, that exceed, adding that amount to the original contract, um, and the other change orders that's been put in place that exceeds the fifteen percent, um, that we are allowed to go over on a change order, so only way, only option we would have, uh, with, with that being an option would be deduct roughly seventy-five, uh, hundred from C four L's existing sidewalk contract to get underneath that fifteen percent limitation.
Or bid it, right, rebid the whole thing?
We, staff has provided several options in the agenda, uh, packet for you guys, um, rebidding the whole thing is one option.
Would that slow us down? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Under the rebid, yes, close down, but, uh, kind of up or be rebid, both the side the gazebo concrete will be one time for one turnkey project. And we think at this point, it's probably our best action. We can terminate the existing C four L sidewalk contract for our convenience. We will be outside for doing that, um, and, uh, it allows it to term convenience and the general conditions of the contract with seven days' notice. Things that the contract has already done, uh, the cost for his bid bonds, uh, time that he's put, we'll have to pay that, don't think it will be an exorbitant amount. The, and the reason we think this is a good move is change order number three, forty-two thousand eight sixty-four is substantially higher than we expected. There seems to be some attitude about laying the red concrete sidewalks that are used to accommodate city staff stamping the brick pattern has become questionable. If that contractor lays that red, uh, concrete too fast and we can't keep up, it's going to create cluster. I won't use the other word, he goes, uh.
How much do you think it's gonna cost additionally, Leroy? For us to rebid this thing, how much do we lose on the deal?
I'd rather, I, I think it's, it's worth what we'll lose, but I'd rather not state what I think we'll have to pay that contractor because I'm tipping them off.
I can't hear you, man, you're breaking up big time.
I'd rather not publicly state it, uh, what our expectations are because then we're tipping our end to the contractor.
Okay.
But basically, you're talking about product that he's already brought us that we're paying.
Product and bonds. And we're probably looking at ten to fifteen percent of the contract. Which is not that much that we have to eat.
What do you want, so you really are looking at D is what you want to do?
Yes.
Penny?
I think what we're leaning, staff's leaning towards is yes, uh, four B, which just, uh.
B or D?
Option four B.
In, in the new sheet that I sent out to everybody, it's, it's, it's a version of D.
Where's B, where's that?
Instead of just rebidding the gazebo concrete work, we would cancel the existing C four L sidewalk contract and rebid the sidewalk and the, uh, gazebo concrete work as one package, one turn, turnkey job by one contractor, and we will bid it out where that contractor will provide the red concrete, lay it down, and that contractor will also do the brick stamping where now we wouldn't have people working the same job. Two, two entities working the same job, if something goes wrong, you get into the finger for you. It would be a much cleaner deal for us just to rebid all the concrete work and get a turnkey job where that contractor does it all.
I like that idea.
Leroy, let me clarify that if they're not looking at your notes, if we're looking at the original agenda, that'd actually be item, that'd be E, other options.
Well, yeah, because I was looking for four B and there isn't one.
There isn't one, and what you're like.
So, okay, so I'm clear now, so what do you need? Do you need a motion?
We need a motion to, uh, terminate the existing C four L sidewalk contract for the city's convenience and rebid the sidewalk gazebo contract work that would include a turnkey job of contractor providing the red concrete materials, installing it and stamping it.
I have definitely a motion.
They'll move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll go through roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilman Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Bathroyd.
Aye.
Councilman Channel. Councilman Channel.
Don, your mic's off.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pageant.
Aye.
And Marquand Ling, yes, uh, unanimous approval then to move forward with termination of the existing contract, uh, rebidding a, uh, full package contract as Leroy has, uh, has identified, including, uh, pouring of, uh, red cement, uh, and, and the, uh, texturing of the brick pack, pack, uh, pattern and so forth. Okay? All right. Now, let me see where we are here.
We're Mr. Kasich's forty-five seconds of fame.
Okay, item number, eh, item number eight. Discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number, uh, three, 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 repealing chapter four, article twenty-two, building design standards, et cetera, et cetera. Staff.
Mayor, before Dan starts, if I could give just, uh, uh, input, there's a lot of moving parts to this ordinance. With everything we've had going on, I've not had the chance to read this in detail, not that I question any of Dan's work, but just to make you know, if you move forward with this tonight, it would be without any input from me because I've not had the chance to go through this ordinance in detail.
So can we table it, or do we just, what do we do and come back and do this another day then?
There's two options, I think, one would be let him go through his presentation tonight so that he, he could kind of explain it and then vote to the meeting, or we could just postpone the entire thing, table it to the next.
Yeah, I'd rather do that.
All right, uh, Dan, is there, uh, I have a question, is there any particular, uh, expediency necessary here? Do we have an emergency situation? Do we have a time element?
No, uh, it, two weeks is not gonna make any difference or till the next meeting in that, uh, because this is just a kind of part one of the overall zoning code update that I have prepared, and this is kind of the, the first part because the council had interest in the architectural design aspects and that, so there's no emergency, and, and again, if we just want to table it in its entirety and go through the whole presentation, again, that's not gonna cause any issue on staff soon.
Okay.
If you could get us.
I, I'm sorry?
Dan?
Yes.
If you could get us a Cliff Notes or a synopsis, I mean, I started going through it, I really did. But there are so many sections and subsections and things that are referenced, if, if you can get us some dumb it down.
I agree. Yeah, because I, I even have for my own, so I have made kind of the highlights and, and I can do that because, uh, again, I can hit kind of the main things that are gonna be changing and probably have the, I guess, most significant impact, uh, in that. Uh, because coming up, you know, like I said, we'll have the zoning code, which I plan to have probably at least a couple meetings in front of the council because, uh, that has far more moving parts than this ordinance, uh, in that. But in the end, I think we're gonna achieve a very good thing for the community to where we can get a lot of our requirements up to par and also, uh, have the ability for when development comes to have it done in a, uh, good way, uh, through the comprehensive plan and, and some of that. So it, it's gonna be good for all, but it is gonna take some, uh, kind of explaining and, and, uh, uh, you know, uh, that part of it.
Okay.
You never usually say much, but you loaded all of our wagon with this one.
Oh, yeah, and that's why I said, this is just the lull of what's to come, so we'll have fun with it.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, we will, we will, uh, table item number eight, uh, to the next, to the next city council meeting. That was the desire of the group that I understood.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Item number nine, uh, comments from council. Councilwoman Pageant?
I have no comment tonight, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Case?
Everybody keep being safe, guys, we want you to do exactly what you've been doing, don't take a damn thing. This is working, it's working, but it's, it's up to you to make it happen, so make it happen. Right.
Councilman Long?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, bring to Dan's attention and Leroy's attention, I've had a couple of, uh, people contacting me again in regards to Larry Lad gaffolding downtown, if we could take a look at that, I don't know how long he plans to leave that up again, not roped off. It's been up for a couple of weeks again. Hopefully, maybe some of these ordinance will help Larry fill some of his buildings by, meaning he's gonna have to do some minimum standards of improving them. But, um, other than that, appreciate everybody's hard work.
Councilman Channel?
James, sorry about your birthday.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes, thank you, staff, I appreciate all your hard work, especially the, uh, police tonight, the national public police officers, plus the sheriff's department, but, uh, other than that, I have nothing else, thank you.
Councilman Bathroyd?
Uh, just, I ditto everybody and just, uh, want to make sure everybody remains safe, stays safe, and, um, everybody protects everybody.
We're, by the way, we're losing a little bit of light on, on you, Councilman Bathroyd.
Oh, are ya? Yeah, it's getting dark in here, I'm, I'm ready to close her down.
Yeah, okay, I, I just like. I, I, I'd like to, I'd like to thank staff too, I, I'd just like to remind everybody as, uh, as Councilman Bathroyd has mentioned a couple different times, we're not through with this, uh, this, this, uh, virus thing. We're, uh, we're, it, it's gonna be around for a while, and, uh, we need to be diligent in what we do, uh, as models, uh, of, uh, of a safe environment. Uh, and, um, I'm working together, I think we can continue, I think our numbers are pretty good in Guthrie, uh, relatively speaking. Uh, the, uh, I was talking to the county health department, uh, yesterday, uh, and they've done a little over two hundred, um, testings and in their drive-through test, uh, and, uh, and they've had four positives, so that's pretty good. Uh, I think, James, I think we're at thirteen, I believe, for Guthrie with, um, I think eleven, uh, recoveries. Uh, so I think that's, again, again, positive, but folks, we are no, we are not near the end of this thing. Um, it's gonna be around for a while, um, so persevere, uh, thanks to all the people that, behind the scenes that make things happen, stocking shelves, the, uh, nutrition staff at the, at the school, providing all those lunches for those kids that are, um, that, uh, uh, have been being picked up at, at, uh, noon, Monday through Friday, doing a great job, and again, uh, our first responders, um, in, uh, firemen and, and in this case, uh, with our, our special acknowledgement of, uh, National Police Week. So thank you for all that you do, uh, that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned and, uh, we didn't set any record tonight for, uh, expediency, but I think the dialogue, discussion, uh, was very good. Congratulations, well done, uh, we'll move on to the next step.